Are we live?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll call the meeting of the town of Wareham Board of Selectmen for November 24th, 2020 to order. May we have a roll call, please?
All five selectmen are present, as is town moderator Smith, as is town administrator Sullivan, as is town council Bowen.
Okay, pledge of allegiance. Moderator Smith, please.
Why did I have the feeling you were going to do that? My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic by which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Announcements, Alan.
Okay, first off, the OBA is going to have a drive-through Christmas event at Onset Pier. It's going to be December 13th instead of December 12th because we're hoping to have a town meeting on December 12th. The police department has signed off today because of the change in how they were going to do it. So has the board of health. We should probably be voting on that either next week or the week after, most likely on the 8th. Next is just a basic comment for everybody to, please be careful over this week here. If you're going to have family, just try to do the best you can with it. You know, the vaccine is coming. It's, you know, it's not going to be here tomorrow, but it is coming. And it's kind of a short period when you think about life in general, the whole offer two or three months, you know, so we can all get through this. I want to reach out to two businesses locally in town. The Narrows Restaurant is been serving turkey dinners Monday, Tuesday, and tomorrow. I think it's $14. It's more food than I can eat, I can tell you that. So if someone doesn't want to cook, they can stop in Steve Bob and they can pick it up, I think up until eight o'clock on Wednesday night and have a turkey dinner on Thursday if they want to reheat it or do it early. There's a new business on Main Street that opened up just recently called Smartphone Repair. I went in and brought Sandy's phone in. Young man looked at it and looked up for the information, found out her phone is a limited edition, which means that the battery's not the normal one. Told me he would get a battery for me and call me the next day. And sure enough, about 12:30 in the afternoon, he called me, said, "Battery's in. Bring your phone in." About 20 minutes later, she had her phone back with new battery, everything ready to go. It's a really well-run business. I went and looked up online just for curiosity on the Google. The gentleman has like 85 reviews. They're all five-star. So we have a nice new business in town. That's it.
Thank you. Patrick?
No, I don't have any announcements.
Okay, thank you. Jim?
No, no announcements.
Thank you. Judy?
No, no announcements.
Yeah, I would just, the only thing I would say was I would echo what Alan said. You know, stay away from each other this year so you can celebrate next year. Is really the best advice I think anybody can give you. You know, we're not a police state. You know, the thing on the turkey isn't reporting to us what you're doing or how many people you have in your house to sort of mention a common Facebook meme that's out there now. But, you know, please try to exercise common sense. If you just can't resist seeing your grandchildren or your aunt or this, that, and the other thing, keep your distance, keep the mask on as much as you can. Try not to breathe each other's air. Please have a safe Thanksgiving. Citizens comments. I know Mrs. Slaven indicated an interest in speaking, so if we could turn her mic on?
She's on.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Put her microphone.
She's still muted.
You have to unmute yourself at this point, or do they?
No, you're not. You're muted.
You might have to come speak into Alan's mic anyway.
Because I think I'm getting an.
Yeah, with both of them on, I think you're going to get an echo. Alan, can you? Yeah, Alan muted himself. Okay.
No, I'll go in the room. Okay.
Okay. Go ahead.
Well, this is my favorite one so far.
No reply ever required to silence, right?
Oh, I'm going to try and turn it off. Go to the next person.
Is there anybody else? Let me turn on the chat and see if anybody is telling me they would like to speak. If you'd like to speak, activate the chat function and put a message to me. And then I will ask the TV station to unmask you. Okay, Diane Kenny would like to speak. So if WCTV would unmask Diane, please. No, she's still muted. Up, we see you, but we don't, but we're not, you're showing up as muted Diane. There we go.
I just wondering if the date for the special town meeting is still December 19th?
There's going to be a declaration postponing that off into January. The likelihood of it taking place in January. I mean, I don't, I don't want to, you know, steal the moderator's thunder here, but I'm guessing for, you know, something of this nature that's going to draw a lot of people, maybe, you know, January might not be the time.
Great, thank you.
Okay, I'll go down and see if there's anyone else. Do we have this? Oh, here she is. Okay, go ahead.
Um, I just moved to channel 29 and I don't see anything being broadcast.
That's not good.
So my comments, um, there is an article being submitted by the Wareham Affordable Housing Trust for a source of funding. I would like you.
What that Sandy is, is that, you know, that's coming from a committee and this is, you know, strictly citizens' comments and you sit on that committee.
Okay, so I can't ask you to put it on. Okay, then I'll go to my citizen's comment.
Okay, go to the next one.
I'm here for the Wareham Garden Club promoting our fair on Friday, December 5th from 9:00 to 12:00 at St. Patrick's Hall parking lot on High Street. It's all outside. We're going to have our wreaths and our greens and our boxwood trees and arrangements. And we'll also be selling our cookbooks at the fair at $14 apiece. And I'd like everybody to notice what the Wareham Garden Club has done to Main Street, the little domes in front of the post office. Three of them are missing their mittens already, so whoever has them, please return them. And if you notice, there is a new Christmas tree on Bessie Park. We arranged a whole bunch of branches around one of the light poles and lit it and decorated. So at night, take a look and enjoy. Remember, fair Friday, December 5th, please promote the garden club from 9:00 to 12:00. Thank you.
If Alan could get us, Alan, why don't you announce it next week? We'll put it on you. We know you know better than to forget.
Sure, let me forget. Don't worry.
Jim?
Um.
WCTV.
The TV, I'm getting emails from everybody. It's not broadcasting.
As of right now, it's still not broadcasting. I just turned it on.
That's right, it's not.
All right, what channel? Are you guys looking at Comcast, Verizon, or both?
Both.
I'm looking at Verizon 2029 or 30.
And Comcast isn't showing either.
Well, it's being recorded, so we're going to have to get an announcement out after the fact for when they get this up on the website so people can watch it.
Yep, sorry.
So my, my announcement is a waste of?
No.
We'll try next week.
I do.
I shut up.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll check the chat one more time to see if there's anybody else there who'd like to speak.
We also have a.
Anyone?
I think the Zoom program, Peter, is a little different than usual. Normally you get a max of nine blocks per screen. I'm up to 16 already, which has never happened before.
I did, there was one week when we had over 20 people on and I managed to have it in two screens.
Yeah, but like I said, I'm looking at 16 now on one screen alone, which is, which is different.
It's on.
Five, 10, 15. Mine is showing up as 19 blocks.
Okay, and the TV is now on.
TV is now on?
Yes.
Okay, well, I'll just say, welcome to our television viewers. We actually started a few minutes ago, went through the roll call, pledge of allegiance, had a few announcements. We'll repeat the garden club announcement. Alan, let's see how much you remembered from your wife.
I'm a senior. I have a senior moment now. Hold on, the real person's coming back again.
Garden Club Fair, Saturday, December 5th, from 9:00 to 12:00 at St. Patrick's Hall. Wreaths, greens, boxwood trees, arrangements, and we're selling our cookbooks at $14 apiece. Please come and support us and enjoy what we've done on Main Street.
Yeah, she wants them, make sure they don't steal any more gloves off the gnomes.
Yep. Okay, let's see. That's it for citizens' comments. Nobody else has come in. Board comments, Alan?
Okay, do this quickly. We all have different boards, committees, commissions that we're either liaison or actually on the board as a voting member. I'm finding that it's really important that we basically send notes off to each other as each committee, you know, has a meeting to let us know if there's anything going on that's important because there's linkage with different committees when things are going on, which, because we all have our own stuff to do, we don't know what's happening with a lot of the other committees most of the time. We don't, even if you get the agenda sent to you, which we do, you still don't know what's actually happened. Just as an example, I had a meeting on Thursday about the commuter rail, and there's a parking issue, which I'll talk about a little bit later. And I didn't realize that the, what Serpent was proposing for the Wareham Redevelopment Authority for the Deacon School did not include anything talking about possibility using some of the land for a train station with parking. So I actually presented that at the meeting on Thursday. And it's been recorded. They're going to be looking at that long-term as well. And I feel as though I kind of stepped my foot into the stuff because I put something out there that may not be possible at this point now. Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, hold on a second. Oh yeah, something else came up too. Just for curiosity, people want to watch, Province Town has decided to enact a code of conduct act for all boards, committees, and commissioners. Might be curious to see what they actually come up with. That's it.
I saw that. They have some interesting issues down there.
Yes, they do.
But I'm thinking are, at least I hope are peculiar to them.
We'll see.
Okay. Patrick, comments?
I'm good.
Jim, comments?
Um, yeah, you just mentioned the code of conduct. That's something we had with the Commonwealth and with the different unions and something we had to accept into one of our contracts a number of years back. So you could probably look that up on the state's website if you're interested. It's pretty generic, you know, be good, don't be rude to people, be professional. Just for, you know, piggybacking on what Alan said there. And, you know, when we have our liaison reports, I mean, that's a good position or spot to express things that have happened during our meetings if we attend or watch them on Zoom to the other board members. And that's, that's what I try to do if there's anything important going on. So we can utilize that. Also, I remember, I mean, three weeks ago, I guess, I had brought up the fact that we can utilize the, the bylaw or the charter change related to adding things to the warrant after it's been opened and closed. So I think it's important that we do utilize that moving forward. Everything doesn't have to be done in a special town meeting. And I know our town attorney opined on it. I just wanted to emphasize that. So as we move forward during other times, we can utilize that additional ability that, I guess it was two years ago, we voted to put it in?
Yeah, we voted. I think the legislature took until early 2019 for that to go through, if I remember.
So that's about it, and thank you.
Yeah. You know, further with respect to the, the town meeting question, I've got to get signatures from you guys tonight so we can get the warrant posted tomorrow. I'm meeting up with the clerk and the constable to get the formal posting done at the clerk's bulletin board, which is required under the charter, and also to get it served upon the chairman of the finance committee and the town moderator, which is another requirement. That's supposed to be done, you know, after we close the warrant. The only problem is, is Thursday is Turkey Day. Town Hall's closed tomorrow, but we'll figure it out. So I've already texted Alan. Judy has already signed it. I've texted Alan. Patrick, if you want, I can swing by with it tonight.
Sure.
Uh, Jim, I don't know, do you want to sign it?
Well, sure. I was in, I was in town hall earlier today.
Yeah. Now, I had it with me because I.
I didn't know that you had that, that document to be signed, but we'll figure something out.
Yeah, meet up in the morning or something if it's, you know, whatever. Okay, so I'll, I'll be texting you guys, you know, to arrange getting that. Let's see. I guess that's it. Okay, last week, we had the Conservation Commission appointment before us, an application from Ms. Morales. Some of the members were interested in, in trying to find some information that they were interested in. If that's happened and everybody's ready for a vote, let's have a motion. Okay, is there anybody who will make a motion to appoint?
Well, I'll make a motion to appoint Lisa Morales to the, as an associate member of the Conservation Commission, term ending, what would it be, June 30th?
Yes.
2021?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion from Jim. Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Go ahead, what's your discussion, please?
As of today, I checked with our director of inspection services and the issue that I brought up about the code violation is still outstanding. Nothing's been done about it. So that still creates a problem for me.
Okay.
I, I stopped in there after a meeting that I had had earlier in Rochester, and the director of inspection services is out, was out yesterday, at least most of the day and today. So I asked, I guess it was the plumbing and gas inspector, he was in the office and he provided me with the folder. I did not see an official complaint in there. I saw a permit, some work had been done, an opinion on something else. And I didn't have anybody to speak with, so I didn't find anything egregious in it to say. Thank you.
Okay. I know Judy, you were one of the ones who was interested perhaps?
No, I'm all set.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second to appoint. Is there any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote, Alan.
No.
Uh, Jim?
Yes.
Patrick?
No.
Judy?
No.
Uh, myself, no. The motion to appoint fails 1-4-0. Okay, thank you. Certified Waymasters?
Yes, I have a list of all of them with their addresses. If you want me to just read them all in, I can do that under one motion.
Sure.
Is that okay, Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Okay.
If there's any, any further discussion as to, you know, what a certified waymaster is and why we appoint him and so on and so forth, you can have that discussion after our motion is made.
Okay. I move that the Board of Selectmen appoint the following individuals as certified waymasters. Daniel Wallaka, 11 Snip to it, Lane Cushnet, no, Small Pond Lane Cushnet. Brett Wallaka, 19 Miller's Lane in Hanover. David St. Germain, 36 Dean Street, New Bedford. Toby Goncalves, 97 Emerson Street, New Bedford. Leonard Bissett, 145 Adams Street, New Bedford. Lauren LaFevra, 68 Caroline Street, Apartment 2, New Bedford. And Eileen Morris, 285 Caroline Street, New Bedford. Their terms would expire 6/30/2021.
Okay, we have a motion to appoint by Judy. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Patrick. Any further discussion, anyone?
I'd like to have a little information. I believe Attorney Bowen was going to look into this and get back to us about a certified waymaster. I couldn't find anything as far as being a certified waymaster in Massachusetts general laws. I see, I saw, we can appoint wares and wouldn't be for the town, it would be in the town. But if Attorney Bowen could open, it would be great.
Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Chairman, for you to select the munis. Chapter 98 provides for the appointment of sealers of weights and measures. We've, chapter 98, section 34, allows or requires for the appointment of a sealer of weight and measure and also agents. So while I'm not familiar with the specific terminology that's being used here, I think that probably what's happened is over the years, you've just come up with sort of your own colloquial description of a sealer of weight and measures, and that should be acting pursuant to chapter 98.
Okay, so he would appoint them as their agents. So what I found is under chapter 41, section 85, wares, measures, and surveyors of goods, that a mayor or selectman, on the written request of any person buying, selling, or transporting goods or commodities which require weighing, surveying, or measuring, shall appoint wares, measure, surveyors of such good and commodities, who shall sworn before entering upon the duties shall serve for one year and shall be moved anytime by the appointing authority. At least one such wearer, measure, or surveyor in each town shall not be engaged in the business of buying, selling, or transporting the goods or the commodities weighed, measured, or surveyed by him. No person shall be ineligible for appointment because of sex or because of residence elsewhere in the town where appointed, then in the town where appointed, notwithstanding any provisions to the contrary in any general special act. So I would say we, we appoint them as wares in the town under chapter 41, section 85. And it wouldn't be for the town, it would be for the town. That's, that's what I could find out. The only mention I could find for certified wares is an organization nationally and also within the Commonwealth who have their own terminologies to use. So I'm not against appointing them. I'd just like to be a little more clear on what we're doing and why and when. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
I, I don't recommend that you make the reference that specific. So for example, if you look at chapter 98, section 34, it reads, "Subject to chapter 31, the mayor of each city and the selectman of each town of over the 20,000 inhabitants," and that's us, "shall appoint a sealer and may appoint one or more deputies to act under the direction of the sealer. Sealer and the deputy shall enforce the law pertaining to weights and measuring devices and to giving a false or insufficient weight or measure. And any person who hinders, obstructs, or in any way interferes with the sealer or deputy in the performance of duty shall be punished by a fine of not more than $500 for the first offense." And it goes on in that nature for quite a number of lines. So I, I'm just suggesting that you're not limited to any specific sections since this appointment may just as well be taking place under chapter 98, section 34.
So you would have us use the full per number of all the general laws that are relevant?
Yes.
Okay. I've been waiting to use the word per number at a selectmen's meeting.
Yeah, I, I personally. What, what, what did you, what did Attorney Bowen address it as? The weights and measures, the deputy, what was the title?
The selectmen of each town of over 20,000 inhabitants shall appoint a sealer and may appoint one or more deputies to act under the direction of the sealer of weights and measures. Yeah.
Right. So that becomes, is that, do they become an employee then and, and fall under the, the town government?
I don't know if we're paying them or not.
In this, we would not be.
That question.
So, go ahead, I'm sorry.
We have a sealer of weights and measures who works for the town and who goes around and seals the gas pumps and stuff like that. These are all employees of Wallaka movers.
Correct. So that's why I felt that they'd fall under that other section that I mentioned there, chapter 41, section 85, is they're wares for a company. They're not working for the town. They're working in the town. But however you just want to go, you can go. And I'll just base my vote upon what I believe. Thank you.
Okay, is there any further discussion about the appointment of the waymasters? Okay, we have a motion from Judy, a second by Patrick. Roll call vote, Alan?
Yes.
Patrick? Patrick, you there? I'll come back.
Hold on, yes. I had to unmute, sorry.
Okay, okay. It's a yes from Patrick. Jim?
No.
Uh, Judy?
Yes.
I'll vote yes too. 4-1-0. Next up, we have more liquor licenses?
Yes. The first one is an application from Project Half Shell Inc., DBA Cohog Republic, 197 Onset Avenue, Onset, for a seasonal liquor license extension from December 1st through January 15th, 2021. And I move that.
Second.
Okay, motion to extend the seasonal liquor license by Judy, seconded by Alan. Roll call vote, Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Myself, yes, 5-0-0. And we have other licenses.
Okay, I move the renewal of the following year-round common bic all alcoholic beverage licenses for the year 2020 under the provisions of chapter 138 of the Massachusetts general laws. And just for your information, all of the paperwork is in order. The first one is Gourmet Garden of Wareham, Inc., DBA Ginger, 2421 Cranberry Highway, Wareham, Mass. Second one is Guy Joe, Inc., DBA Lobster Pot, 3155 Cranberry Highway, Wareham, Mass. The third one, Vels, Inc., DBA Vels Restaurant, 2352 Cranberry Highway, West Wareham.
Second.
Okay, motion by Judy, seconded by Patrick. Roll call vote, Alan?
Uh, just a question. The Gourmet Garden Wareham, have they changed their sign or something to say ginger or just call the application? I've never seen the name ginger before.
It's always been ginger.
Okay. Just, I've just never seen it listed anywhere. My answer's yes.
Okay, Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Myself, yes, 5-0-0. Okay, we have another set.
The next one is, I move the renewal of the following year-round retail package goods store, all alcoholic beverage licenses for the year 2021 under the provisions of chapter 138 of the Massachusetts general laws. Number one, Browns Package Store, Inc., DBA Browns Liquors, 189 Marion Road, Wareham. Number two, DJP Liquor Corp., DBA The Jug Shop, 219 Main Street, Wareham. Three, Amar Joyet Corporation, DBA Wareham Liquors, 419 Main Street, Wareham. And number four, DJ Sullivan LLC, DBA Sullivan Wine and Spirits, 2060, Marion Road, Wareham.
Second.
Okay, motion by Judy, seconded by Patrick. Any questions? Roll call vote, Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Myself, yes, 5-0-0. Okay, town business, COVID-19 update. Okay, town business, COVID-19 update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have
You gotta really speak up, Derek, or turn the volume up on your computer. I actually had somebody say last week they couldn't understand you. It wasn't Alan for once, it was you.
Yeah, so we have 12, in the last 12 days, we have 55 new confirmed cases and three probable. Nine of them were in the last two days. And we have 110 confirmed cases and one probable currently.
Okay. Any questions for Derek on the towns?
I think we might be getting close to being unread, unfortunately.
We'll find out Friday. I think that's when the state's going to announce this week because of the holiday. But I think it's just, you know, everybody, as Peter mentioned earlier, I mean, take note and just go out when you have to, cover up, and I'm kind of, you know, hunkering down for the most part. And, you know, unfortunately, some of the businesses might take a hit again. But for the health and safety of everyone, probably the best thing for us to do is just only do what we really have to. Thanks.
Patrick?
I'm all set. There's really not much to say. Look, we've been doing this for a long time now. We know that the numbers go up and down. And if people don't, you know, protect themselves, that's on them at this point. Everybody knows that there's ways to do it, and they all know who they are that are at risk, and you need to protect yourself. And that's the way it should be. I mean, you know, take care of yourself.
Thank you. Judy?
No, thank you.
I don't have anything either. I would like to, though, just, you know, in terms of information, but I would like to thank the Board of Health and the health agent, the health inspector, and the office staff there for doing a really good job with us. You know, they've had a lot of responsibility thrust on them and not a lot of time. Nobody had been through something like this in over 100 years, so I don't know how you could even go back and research how to handle it. But they've done a really nice job. And we're very appreciative of their efforts to try to keep us safe. Refuge update.
You want to go?
Looks being exchanged here, so who wants to lead off?
We had a meeting with Rochester today about you know, about inclusion in the to utilize the transfer station. I think it was a very positive meeting. I think Mr. Sullivan can maybe bring us up to date on what's going on on basically, it's mostly, he's taking care of most of the details and operation and contracts, so if he could bring us up to date on it, anything new would be great.
Yeah, I think what I'd prefer is we have this update on there, and then there's sort of an expectation of manufacturing information. I think when we have it, I'm going to send it out to the board ahead of time, and we can do it during a meeting as well. So, you know, it's, rather than we're sort of distributing this piecemeal and confusing people, so let's, when we've got some real info, we'll zip it out.
You took a while to say that you had nothing to say, but that's okay. Okay. Here we go. Discussion and vote to request town moderator to take up only financial articles at the rescheduled December 12th, 2020 Fall Town Meeting. Derek, I will turn this back over to you again because you can provide sort of the financial basis for why these articles need to be taken up.
Okay, yeah, let me
If you need a second to pull it up, take your time.
I have the list if you need it.
It won't do me any good there, so. The So just going through it, the first one, obviously, financial article one, approving fund capital plan. Second one, transfer of free cash, that's financial in nature. Article three, prior year bills, we don't know of any at this point, that's financial. Article four, PEG access, that's the funding for the transfer of the PEG access funds to Wareham Community TV. I'm guessing if we don't take that one up, our Zooms might get shortened drastically.
Yeah. Yeah, we don't
Or not broadcast.
Article five is the union contracts. Yeah, then we'll, we skip over article six, seven, eight, nine. Those are acceptance of gifts of property and let's assign bylaw and the drive-through, some of the zoning. Article 10, transfer of the Deacon School. I would say I'd like to have that one voted upon because we're constructing next fiscal year's budgets already, and we will need to know whether we have to budget for that for at least six months, maybe a little bit longer than the municipal maintenance budget. So that's going to be, that's going to give us an idea. Article 11 is financial with the transfer of McKinney Vento Funds. Article 12, we would pass over that, that's a bylaw amendment. Article 13, that's a zoning bylaw amendment. Article 14, harbor services permits receipts reserved for appropriation, that is a financial article. Article 15, the Wareham Village One, the one reinvestment sub-district zoning, that is a zoning change, so that would not be a financial. Article 16, Tremont Nail Remediation Project, that's frankly just paying, paying the debt on something that's already been authorized and been allowed to borrow. So that's financial. Article 17, 2020 Community Preservation Fund Reserves Adjustment, that needs to be done, so that's financial. Article 18, the WPCF Use of State Revolving Funds, that's a $9 million financial article. Article 19, Amendments to Charter, non-financial. Article 20, Amendments to Charter, non-financial. Article 21, Town Meeting Endorsement of Master Plan, non-financial. Article 22, Establish Solid Waste or Recycling Fee, that's with the bylaw, that is a very important financial article. Article 23, Solid Waste and Recycling Revolving Account, a, again, a important, important financial one. And then article 24 is the naming of the elementary school, non-financial. Article 25, Ban of Sales of NIPS, that is a non-financial article.
Okay, comments from the board, Alan?
None.
Patrick?
None.
The Deacon School article, would that be coming out of fiscal year and not 2021? That would be up to July 1? Am I correct or incorrect on that?
That is correct, but remember, we will be establishing the the FY 20, the next fiscal year's budget, at the same time voting whether that gets transferred or not. So if it, if it gets transferred, I need to have the money in there. If it doesn't, we don't need the money in there, although I'm sure the DPW director would be very happy to expend any extra funds.
Okay, so we need to put the money in now in order to have it available for FY 21?
I'd like to know if it's going to be turned over to the town so I can budget properly.
Oh, just a turnover, no budget. I get you.
Yeah.
Take it easy.
I'm looking, I'm not looking at anybody, I'm looking at the stuff itself, so.
Just say you're glaring at your kids, that covers all your sins. Let's see, Judy?
No, no comment.
I don't have any questions either. I would like to thank the moderator for her work in, you know, adapting to the abrupt circumstance we found ourselves in last week when the State Department of Revenue said you got to deal with, you know, your financial articles or we're not going to certify your tax rate. And just for anybody who's listening in sort of edification, I guess, a failure to certify the tax rate by the end of the year means you don't get to get your the first billing in the next year out because you have to wait further into the year to get the tax rate certified, which means that out of the over, somewhat over $40 million that we collect as, you know, through our tax levy, that's real estate taxes, a quarter of that would not be coming into the town. And, you know, I don't know how much it costs to get a bridge loan for 10 million bucks, but I don't think we really want to find out. So I'd like to thank the moderator, you know, for her work in securing the VFW, working with the public safety people to ascertain that that was a good place to hold a meeting. And again, we're just taking up the financial articles, if we vote this. No Wareham Village One rezoning. There's no substantial changes in particular to the town here. This is just what we would normally be doing to make things happen. Maybe the exception of the trash issues that we have to solve, but those are certainly about the most financial related thing that's on here at this point for the people, so. That's what I've got to say. Can we have a motion, please?
I move to request the town moderator to take up only the financial articles at the rescheduled December 12th, 2020 Fall Town Meeting as read off the record by Mr. Sullivan. It includes certain articles.
Okay, we have a motion by Judy and a second by
Alan.
Alan? Any further discussion? Okay, Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Myself, yes. And once again, December 12th at the VFW at noon time. Nothing too sexy, folks, just some money articles so we can keep the town running. What else do we have? Oh, we have a potential employee.
Vote to ratify the hiring of Ryan Campia, an operator at WPCF.
Second.
Okay, motion by Judy, seconded by Alan. Any discussion?
Not by me.
Okay, roll call vote, Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Myself, yes, 500.
Next, I will move to renew the animal shelter agreement with the town of Lakeville, which would expire 12/31/21. We've been doing business with them since we shut our own shelter down.
Second.
Okay, motion by Judy, seconded by Alan. Any questions? Roll call vote, Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Myself, yes, 500.
Next, I move to accept the donation from the Friends of the Wareham Free Library, Inc., in the amount of $1,000 to pay for the operating expenses and utilities of the Spiny Memorial Branch Library.
Okay, we have a motion by Judy.
Second.
Alan.
I'll give it to Jim. Seconded by Jim. Roll call vote, Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Myself, yes, 500. Okay, next up, discussion and possible vote to reestablish Bike Path Committee. Alan, I think this was your requesting.
We had a Bike Path Committee, and unfortunately, over a period of time, the people lost interest. Everybody kind of went away, nobody wanted to be reappointed. We now have, we're part of an organization called the South Coast Bike Way Alliance, which goes from Fall, actually, Westport, all the way to Buzzes Bay. The meetings are myself and Ken Buckland have been handling this, you know, for the town now for a while. We've been able to procure a grant through, for the state to actually do the Bike Path section of Narrows and Minutetown in place, but the problem is that there are meetings constantly with the South Coast Bike Way Alliance. There's a lot more to do, and for myself and Ken, it's a lot more work than we really can handle at this time ourselves. And we need a committee back in place to get, to keep this going. I think there should be like five members to make it easy because it's a hard time getting seven or nine that they had before. They'd like to get it reestablished and ask people to basically apply again.
Have a question for you, sir?
Go ahead.
You have, do you have at least five interested parties that you know of?
I have four right now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Patrick?
No, it's fine with me. If they want to have a bike committee, then let's have it.
Okay, Jim?
I think it's a great idea.
Okay, Judy?
It's fine.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make sure. If we're going to do this, Ken Buckland's not going to be required to attend the meetings and such anymore?
No, he's not to be required.
Okay.
If he wants to be there, if not, they'll get the information to him.
Okay, good.
I'll make sure of that.
Yeah, because if it's still requiring him to be there, I'd say, why are you doing it? You know, it's just creating more bureaucracy. But if you, if it's to get stuff off his plate and allow him to do other work, I think that's, that's great.
Yeah, he's overloaded as it is. We can always assign you if you want.
Yeah, I think Ken and I are falling in similar, similar categories.
Yeah, but you and I can use the exercise.
So no. He's union, you're not.
Ken doesn't show his crankiness as much as I do, so.
Yeah, Ken can grieve, you can cry.
Danny just said, I'm a yosso.
Oh, I have a question.
Yes.
Would they be staggered terms like one year, two year, three years? If you had five members, you would have
It would be two, two, and one, Judy.
Two, one.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and then we're just doing the do we, do we have an original purpose for them? I'm just trying.
Yes, basically, the purpose is to develop, you know, the bike path from the Marion Line to the Buzzes Bay Line.
Is that your motion?
You got it.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion to reestablish the Bike Path Committee from Alan, seconded by Judy. Anything further? Roll call vote, Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Myself, yes, 500.
And Mr. Chairman, if you can, I think you know, one of the things that's good about that is it's often, if it's just Alan, you know, and Ken and other people bring something forward to town meeting or speak about it to the residents, I think it's a when you have some people in a, in a committee, sometimes that helps as well. So hopefully you can get some people that can, that can be force multipliers, if you will.
Yeah. Thank you. Continued discussion and votes to recommend warrant articles for the 2020 Fall Town Meeting, that would be something we're going to have to do before the 12th, certainly.
Yeah, so I think next week, we, we don't have certified free cash, but we have what's been sent to the Department of Revenue. There's been one reiteration of it, but they are letting us know that tax rates are taking precedence. But we brought some items in from capital planning and I think by next Tuesday, the next meeting we have, I'll have a list for you breaking down what my recommendation for transfers are for stabilization fund, the OPEB, so forth and so on. So, and I'll get that to you. Depending on how Thanksgiving goes, I'll try and get to you ahead of time.
Okay. That's fine. Well, we have, we have next week, which is the first, and we also, you know, have the eighth. I would prefer to, you know, if we could wrap it up on the first, that would be great, but
Yeah.
We're going to have to figure out a way to get these votes to the moderator and also the chairman of the FinCon, so they have the benefit of that as well.
Yeah, I think the faster we can get it done, the better for everybody involved, so.
Yep. Okay, so that's going to stay on. Discussion and vote on articles for 2020 Special Town Meeting. We do have an article that was submitted for the Affordable Housing Trust.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if you may, and I I spoke to selectmen, unites about that earlier, but just to let you know, I did forward that article to the Department of Revenue just to make sure, and so they wouldn't, wouldn't come back and bite us, and they said that they're not considering it a financial article as it's not seeking to appropriate anything. So they are okay from their standard, so that wouldn't be an obstacle.
Well, let's, let's hear why we should put this on the warrant, I guess.
I think some of the members from the Affordable Housing Trust are going to speak to it.
Who do we have? I see somebody who's just showing up as remote. Well, check in chat.
I think you got Missy, yeah.
And Mrs. Slaven. She's raising her hand.
Okay. Uh, who do we have? I'll start with, uh, Mrs. Slaven.
Thank you. I'd like to have the Selectmen consider putting this article on the, on the warrant. I, it is a source of funding for Affordable Housing Trust. Right now, we have none. And we do have requests for assistance for supporting affordable housing and don't have the funds to do it. I think a 25% of the net profit of, uh, town property is well within reason. And I would like to have this put on the warrant and let the people at the town meeting decide whether or not they want it. And if, uh, anybody wants to speak against it, they have that privilege to take the floor at town meeting and do so. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I know we have Missy there. Can we, uh, get Missy's mic turned on so she can speak to us? Up there you are, hello?
Hello. Um, I just support putting it on the town meeting warrant, too. I think it's a great source of revenue for us. I know other towns have done it and, um, it's not coming out of our budget. It's money that we're not counting on and it's a, just a great way to fund the Affordable Housing Trust.
Okay, thank you. Uh, is there anyone else?
I will speak to it, um.
Yeah, go ahead.
In, in the sense of, um, a-as we spoke about other articles, let's put it on town meeting floor and let the, uh, voting body decide, um, whether they're in favor of it or not. Um, that's what I have to say. I mean, this is a great thing. You know, it's, we, we know what we're going to be doing with that source of funds. It's going to help offset the cost of affordable housing and help, um, provide more affordable housing within the town, which is friendly, uh, affordable housing and meets the needs of our citizens and residents. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead. I'll start with Judy and then we'll go to Patrick.
Um, 25% of the net proceeds of the sale of property actually really affects the overall financial condition of the town. Um, what specifically do you have in mind as to how to spend this money?
Uh, as I said, to, to produce affordable housing for, um, needed, uh, residents within the town and, and not just, uh, 40B that's open up to everyone everywhere. Um, you know, maybe seniors, uh, maybe veterans, maybe, um, people with, uh, special needs of different sorts. And, uh, you can't do it without it and, and, um, I don't believe that you can, it really impacts the town in a negative sense in the budget because it's not anticipated funds. It's not something that's in our general funds or budgeted in our taxes and growth and/or, um, the, the two and a half on the base. So, um, I, it's just a place to put it that we know where it's going and it's just not.
I'm not, I didn't hear an answer. Are you hiring people? Are you building bricks and mortar? Are you, what are you doing with the money?
Only above. It could be bricks and mortar, uh, it could be assisting people.
Are assisting?
Because bricks and mortar isn't cheap, you know. You know that, right? Bricks and mortar is not a, a low-cost item.
I understand that. And what about, are you talking about?
Excuse me? You want me to answer that, or?
I wasn't finished with the question. Are you planning on, um, hiring, uh, a person to run this?
Well, you would, you'd need to come up with an idea. Uh, maybe utilize some town properties, maybe the Everett School property. Maybe add some buildings on that for senior housing and utilize the Everett School also. Hire a design consultant and engineers, pretty much like the, um, redevelopment authority does in most of their programs. Very similar, you know, we'll hire people to do all the thinking for us and move it forward.
Thank you.
Okay, Patrick?
Uh, okay, so why are we putting on this warrant again if we're only taking up financial articles if this doesn't qualify?
Well, this would, this is for the special town meeting warrant that would be, uh, that, that's already being postponed, uh, I believe by the moderator, uh, to January. This is before we close the special town meeting warrant tonight, so the.
So we're talking about putting this on that special that has the rezoning issue on it?
That has the zoning as well as the ball field, the two ball questions.
All right, okay. All right, now, um, what if we sold the Deacon's school? It'd be a big chunk of money. 25% of the sale of Deacon's school would be a huge amount of money.
Yes, it would be and, and that school could probably used, uh, for some senior housing or a, um, senior center. Excuse me, excuse me, let me finish.
Let, let him finish, Patrick.
Or a community, a community center. Um, so if you want to sell it, then we could use the funds to offset, again, um, other, other, uh, programs for affordable housing in the town.
Yeah, well, you know, all this money rolls into free cash. If it doesn't, if we didn't spend it on something else, we'd roll it into free cash. So it becomes part of the, the, the money we use for nowadays for infrastructure because, for obvious reasons. Uh, we also use it for our stabilization fund and all those kinds of things. And, uh, you know, uh, there's enough, uh, stuff going around, in my opinion, as far as affordable housing is concerned. Uh, we have a lot of programs in the state. There's a lot of things going on for affordable housing. And you have 40Bs, you know, uh, you say, well, the people in our community, well, that's not, you know, what you say is not true because the people in our community actually, um, get a first shot at, uh, all of those 40Bs. And by the way, just so you know, most of them haven't been able to afford them anyway, so, uh, because we're in the Boston market, as everybody knows, and our people are not in the Boston market. But, uh, you know, this is, uh, this is silliness. We're taking it out of one pocket, putting it into something that we really can't afford. So I'm really not in favor of this.
Yeah, and so, um, just, just to speak to a couple of those points, we can, we don't have to offer it at the prices of which 40Bs. We can do it at, uh, for, for low income, extremely low income individuals. We don't, we're not looking at it as a profit incentive to meet minimal requirements so that, uh, the development can make funds. We're looking to offer, um, homes or housing for people at a rate that they can afford so they can move into them. As you said, people in the 40Bs, they, they can't afford to do it, but we can help them out. For some of our seniors, we should do that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Alan?
First question, maybe Derek can answer it or Rich, or yourself, Peter. Uh, as an example, we have, uh, $600,000, uh, coming through, should have come through the, uh, Bay Point, you know, sort of Stone Pet, or Stone, whatever they call it, Stone Street, for that piece of land. So if it's under the redevelopment authority, does this particular bill would still give the re, the Affordable Housing Trust $150,000?
No, because it's not town property. The, the Bay Point, uh, if you're talking about the parcel at Bay Point that includes, you know, the parking and, you know, the one acre par, the, the parcel we have down there, seven acres, I guess, there's, there's one acre that the developers particularly are interested in. But the seven acre parcel down there is owned in fee simple by the redevelopment authority. So that would be outside of this. Because it's not town property.
So Deacon's School would be outside, too?
Okay, but as an example, what Patrick said, the Deacon's School would be there.
Well, Deacon's School is currently, uh, under town control.
It's under school control right now.
Under school control, but it's owned by the town of Wareham. So, in other words, if, uh, if the warrant article to create the control of the Deacon's School goes over to the Board of Selectmen, then the Board of Selectmen could dispose of it to a private developer. Uh, they could dispose of it to the redevelopment authority. They could, they could dispose of it to, to pretty much anybody. Uh, so that would be something that would be his subject if, if this were to pass. That would be, take the 25% hit on this.
The other, uh, Claire just, Claire just made a point, too, about, uh, just so you know, I saw it come up, about what if they sell the police station, if we build a new police station and they sell that property?
Well, it could go, yeah, it, it, you know, it, it can go for any property, any, any, uh.
Exactly, exactly.
Property, any, any tax taking.
Could be a lot of money.
Well, my que, my question goes back again that if we turn around and any property comes up, we send it over to the redevelopment authority, it bypasses going into the Affordable Housing Trust piece.
Well, it creates.
There's a loophole, yeah.
Yeah, it creates a conflict there.
Yeah, but just, just so you know, I, I'm not interested in creating a big fiefdom over at the redevelopment authority either.
No.
I mean, what they have is what they have. Their job is to go out there and bring stuff into the town. Uh, just putting land over there, to put land over there to, to avoid an issue or whatever is ridiculous.
Well, I don't think the redevelopment, I mean, speaking now, you know, I guess for the redevelopment authority, uh, what I would say to that is, you know, the redevelopment authority doesn't have any interest in acquiring land for the purpose of hanging on to it. I can tell you that. You know, that's not the purpose of the redevelopment authority. It's, it's not to, uh, set up a real estate investment trust with a bunch of properties. It's to get ahold of properties, fix them up and kick them out back into the marketplace. And if there's any money made, you do it to buy more property to the next round. But it's, it's not something that, uh, you know, I, I can tell you that, uh, owning property is not something that, that redevelopment authority is interested in long-term by any stretch.
I'm not saying we're, we're giving it to the redevelopment authority to keep permanently. I'm just saying that that's a way for the property to basically go through and then get sold. Because the idea of redevelopment authority is usually to develop, sell, take the monies and redevelop and sell.
Right.
Yeah, but then the town wouldn't have the money. They would have the money.
Yeah, I understand.
Well, I mean.
I think the town would like to, I, I'm sure Derek, if Derek could sell that place for 600 to 700 or whatever it is, say it's a million, and they could sell it, I'm sure Derek would love to have that million dollars to invest back into the community, not the redevelopment authority.
Yeah, and, and to be honest with you, if, you know, if you've got a, if the town has a valuable piece of land, you know, you can, you can set it up, you know, that any money, if the redevelopment authority, you know, were to make any money, for example, you can put it right in the deed.
Well, again, if we're going to the Deacon's School.
It's not that hard to protect the towns, the town against the redevelopment authority, let's put it that way.
Yeah, my only comment is that, again, you know, the redevelopment authority was presented with a program from SERPET, you know, for the Deacon's School, which means the property would go to the redevelopment authority.
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily. It, I mean, it was presented to us because we're sort of the gateway for this sort of thing. Uh, but that's certainly, listen, that's, you know, that, that's no state secret. That's something that eventually would, would have to come before this board. And this board would, would be wise to consider it regardless of whether they were looking to kick it over to the redevelopment authority or if this board was looking at, at private options.
Uh, repurposing it for, uh, community options.
Yeah, you know, people have said, and I don't necessarily agree with it, but people have talked about putting, you know, putting, uh, sports facilities out there. They've talked about putting public safety out there. They've talked about putting, you know, it's, it's wide open for that place.
Unity Center.
Yeah, so, nobody's made any decisions, nobody's in a position to. At this point, it's information gathering by the redevelopment authority.
Okay.
Um, you know, my, my issue with this is, I don't think it's necessarily a bad idea, but I don't think the idea is fully fleshed out enough at this point. I think to set a 25%, you know, what we've done in the past, the, I think the only time we actually dedicated, uh, revenue that we get in to something different and had the legislature allow us to take it out of the general fund was the Community Events Committee. And if you'll remember with that, the funding sources were identified as, you know, the parking, and I think it was the meal stacks, um, as the alternate source or, or however the split is done. Um, but there was a cap put on it. And they have a $45,000 annual cap that, within which they have to work. Uh, I think, you know, really this needs to go back to the drawing board for something like that. And I think also, you know, refine the mission here, I think is, is what I would advise. Uh, specify what it is exactly you want to do. Uh, you've got an Affordable Housing Production Plan, uh, that was done a few years ago and I think was recently updated. Jim, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think Ken did have an intern go through that. Am I correct?
Uh, it, it's in, it's in the process and it would be utilized for all purposes under which the Affordable Housing Trust was, um, established and all purposes and conditions and, and, and that's what it's for. And I understand what you're saying about a cap. I don't know about a monetary cap. It could go, uh, up to a certain amount on each sale. Um, and I, I think the, the cap with the, um, with the tax, um, that you would just referenced for what's at Community Events, that came after the fact and not when they made the, um, when we passed that at town meeting, that was something that came afterwards. Um, so anyhow, I put it out there and, uh, you know, I would like to see you put it on town meeting floor, let them make the decision. If not, well, we'll be back another time.
Yeah.
That's all I can say.
Mr. Tuckman?
Yes.
Um, my understanding is that the Community Preservation Act can also fund affordable housing. Am I not correct in that?
That's, well, that is correct. Uh, in fact, one of the articles that we'll be taking up at this December 12th, uh, re-noticed town meeting is to, you know, adjust those accounts. Uh, under state law, we have to put 10% that comes in every year into one of three categories and affordable housing is one of those.
Okay, so, I, I really, I, I want this to be refined. I, I haven't heard a specific answer to my pretty specific questions.
Could I hear that again, the specific question?
You just interrupted me. May I finish my sentence?
Please.
Thank you. Um, the, I would like a specific outline of what the money is going to be used for. I would like to see a, if you will, a business plan. And I'd also like to know if the trust would be applying to the CPC, CPA funds for funds as well. And I have a very, I have a concern that we are diverting money from the overall general business of supporting all of our citizens in the town if we were to cap, if we were to take any money from the sale of these properties and give it only to a specific, uh, set of individuals.
Well, thank you, and I, I would have to agree with that if it's a level playing field for all committees and, um, boards within the town. Um, so again, we, we put it out there, we've had a couple of people speak to it and I thank you for your time on this.
Yes, thank you. Alan?
Uh, on the Community Events Committee, we originally put that in there and then we had a hotel come in town. And then all of a sudden, the dollar amounts, uh, which basically would have been like 120 to 150,000 dollars a year by the percentages we had listed originally, uh, which is way more than what that committee ever needed. So my only concern here is to have, to look at this a little more carefully, to see what the, the potential monies are and whether they want to use a cap or something, uh, because we're sitting with, uh, because of what's happened this year, in particular, we have a lot of money sitting in Community Events Committee. And we basically have a set amount we give out every year, which is usually 45,000, you know, to basically balance and, you know, to keep it going and have it run smoothly, so. You know, my feeling has always been to put it to the town meeting, let them decide. But in this case here, I'd like to see, you know, a little more idea of what it is. There is a benefit, obviously, to the Affordable Housing Trust, everybody stands. Uh, if something comes out, they can go ahead and, and spend the money once they have it in their funds. Uh, for CPC, uh, there's usually somewhere in the range of a nine-month lag because of just how things work. So, again, I, I'm a little concerned about the total amount that would go into the Affordable Housing Trust because we have a bunch of properties that we're going to be moving one way or another. And, uh, I'm not sure. I'd almost like to defer to, uh, the town administrator because I think this affects them more than anybody else.
Eric, do you want to weigh in?
Well, the, you know, I think I, I've expressed in, in the past that I like having the, the money in there to do certain things and, uh, I do appreciate that, uh, Selectman Muniz brought back to the Wareham Affordable Housing Trust my concerns, which was to, uh, cap it at the net, um, for some of the, uh, for some of the tax title sales and stuff like that because otherwise, if it was 25% of the whole, it could have actually cost us, cost us money at the, the end of it. So I appreciate them taking that measure.
Okay. Yeah, I, I, I mean, you know, from my perspective, you know, one of the things that, and, and I, I think Alan would agree, uh, when we first got on the board and, you know, one, one of the first things we, we were concerned about was making sure that, you know, things were sustainable, uh, but also. but also that, you know, the money was under control, if you will. And I think without a cap, I, I think that makes it a little bit tough. We're, we're, you know, we're in this pandemic situation and we don't know where we're going to be in a couple of years. You know, Congress can print money to keep the federal government going, uh, but we can't. We don't get to do that. Um, and I'm, I'm concerned that without a cap, uh, in a post, you know, COVID environment, when the economy is going to be terrible, that we're going to see all kinds of foreclosures and everything else. Uh, is it going to, you know, drive the town to have to foreclose on more and more properties just to, to keep our funding coming in? Because let's face it, this isn't found money really. This is money that was already, you know, part of our tax levy in prior years that, you know, in an ideal world, which we know we don't live in, but it's money that would have come into the town coffers. And it's, you know, it's due to the 99% of the taxpayers who do pay their bills on time and don't, you know, stretch things out for years that the town government keeps going. But the flip side is, is they've been floating the people who didn't pay. So, you know, we're, we're not just taking found money here. We're actually taking money that, you know, I, I think the general citizenry has a bit of a claim to. So I think we have to be very careful when we do that. And I would really ask for, for a more refined plan, uh, and a cap going forward. It's, it's, it's tough in, in, in this article process to get all that done, obviously. Uh, and the other thing is.
For a cap here, I mean, what are we looking for? An annual cap, a cap on the, the amount of the sale, uh, the, the gross amount of the sale?
That, that, that's just it. You know, I, I don't know what the best way to do that is now and it's a little, you know, it's, it's tough to hash that out at this point in time. Um, you know, depending on the vote, if, if this doesn't go on the warrant, Jim, what I was advised doing is to try to work, uh, you know, with the members and the trust at the same time. Uh, you know, to try to, you know, what are the objections? What were the things that, you know, people said they had an issue with and try to resolve them? So that you can come back with an article that, you know, gets the vote you need.
Thank you.
There's nothing preventing you from carrying on initiatives, you know, with, with the selectmen, uh, bringing, bringing them from, you know, another committee to here. Uh, going forward. So if it doesn't go on tonight, keep working it. That's my advice.
Well, I'll be back if it doesn't go on tonight.
Yep, thank you. Uh, anything further to be said for whether we put this article on? Okay, I'll ask Alan.
Uh, just very quickly before we vote, uh, I don't have any problem with this going, coming back at at the Springtown meeting. I just want to dial in a little more so I know exactly where we are financially, how it affects. Because I'm expecting, uh, very simply come the, uh, 2022 state budget to have some real issues. And I'm just concerned that we may hamstring ourselves because of that as well. I don't know what the federal infrastructure bill that will come through probably by May or June of this year coming, how it's going to affect us, whether we'll have anything shovel ready to go, be able to take advantage or not. And because of that, uh, I'm a little leery. I'd rather, I'd rather put it off till next, hopefully April and have something that's a little, a little more finite in numbers than everything else. We know where we stand. I like the idea. I don't have a problem with it. It's just, it's just very much like the Community Events Committee. The original idea was fine when it went in, but all of a sudden things changed. Instead of getting like thirty or forty thousand dollars a year, they could have got a hundred twenty thousand a year. And that would have hurt, you know, as far as the town for other folks. So that's my feeling on this.
Okay. Thank you. Anything further? Uh, if somebody would like to make a motion?
I, I'll make a motion. I probably shouldn't seeing I submitted the article.
No, you can. There's no conflict.
And I, I'll make a motion to put this on the special town meeting.
You're not, you're not going to be working on these projects as a brickie, so I don't think we have to worry about it too much.
Well, that's very true. I have no financial gain or other things to be taken out of it.
I'll second, I'll second the motion so at least it can be ordered out.
Okay, anything further to be said? Uh, roll call vote. Alan?
No.
Patrick?
No.
Judy?
No.
Jim?
Yes.
And myself, uh, no, but we look, I, I think we look forward to a refined iteration coming forward from the Affordable Housing Trust.
Thank you. Thank you for your time on this.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for your work on this. Uh, do we have, we don't have any other articles for town meeting? I'll check once with the, uh, town administrator just to make sure something didn't pop into his mind. But we've got the three articles on this special town meeting warrant.
Now, let's just confirm what we have if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, what we have is the, uh, East Wareham, uh, hospital, uh, hospitality, entertainment, sports rezoning. Uh, we have the article to rescind the prior restriction on the Westfield property. And we have the article to authorize a lease of the Westfield property.
I, I believe and, uh, with what we have, uh, for the, um, excuse me, just thinking out loud, what we have for the, uh, bylaw for the trash and Selectman Menees can correct me if I'm wrong, uh, we should be covered by doing it in the December 12th town meeting, so we do not need to put an article on the special.
Do you agree with that, Jim?
Um, I think he said that because of, we won't need an article on a special town meeting because it would be covered in the annual town, the fall town meeting. As far as the language related to curbside collection.
At the, uh, that would be the one taking care, that'd be sort of the omnibus taking care of, of everything.
That's both the, uh.
Curb side and, um.
That would be correct then.
Okay, well, if we're, if we're done, the next item on the agenda is, uh, to close the 2020 special town meeting warrant.
I'm moved. Close it second.
Okay, motion to close the 2020 special town meeting warrant by Patrick, seconded by Judy. Going once, going twice, roll call vote. Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Uh, yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay, the warrant is closed. It will be posted tomorrow and served upon the chairman of the finance committee and the town moderator.
And we haven't voted, uh, in favor of, of the articles, right? We just voted.
Right, they just signed the warrant. We haven't made recommendations yet. That's to come. Okay, so that will be taken care of tomorrow. Uh, any other town business not reasonably anticipated 48 hours?
Yeah, I have, I have something.
I know you do, but I'm going to go around first. Uh, Alan?
No.
Okay, Patrick?
All right, so, um, I don't know if anybody's heard, but the, uh, if, everybody knows that the Dakota Partners are planning on putting up a, uh, affordable housing project that Connor Redbrook wrote. And there is a little hotel right there and that little hotel, uh, was supposed, the individuals in that hotel were supposed to get places in the new place and then they were going to tear the hotel down. Uh, that's the way it came in front of us. If you remember correctly, that's the way it went to the Board of Health and so much so that the Board of Health actually allowed them, the folks to stay in there because as you well know, you can't stay longer than, what is it, 20 days or whatever it is in a hotel in a calendar year. But he, they allowed that to continue knowing that those folks were going to be moving into the affordable units being built at the place. They were going to have their first option. Uh, I think probably most of them would be section eight anyway. But at that point, that was going to happen. Well, the Dakota Partners apparently decided they didn't like the deal and, uh, they sent them eviction notices and they all have to be out by December 1. If you can imagine that, in the middle of the freaking winter.
Merry Christmas.
It's absolutely absurd as I'm concerned, and, uh, you know, I think in order to open up a dialogue with them that I'd like to see us, uh, ask, uh, town administrator to hold any and all permits, uh, from, uh, from those, from the individual, from the project, um, until this can be resolved between, uh, uh, you know, the parties, uh, and the individuals. Because I mean, they need to be able to stay there at least through the winter, in my opinion. Uh, we don't have a lot of leeway with them. They didn't make it a condition of the original approval, unfortunately, even though they came in and touted it that way. Uh, it got missed. Um, so, um, but, you know, the most they could do is sue us and hey, let them sue us. Uh, in the meantime, we'll hold up their permits. Uh, in my opinion, that's the, this is the way to do it. It's a little bit of leverage.
I don't know if, um, Attorney Bowen wanted to opine on this or if he's good.
Yeah, I was going to go to him anyway. Rich?
Um, Mr. Chairman, well, uh, yeah. Hold all the permits under 24-hour business. Uh, not on the agenda.
No.
I don't know, but how does that sound to you?
Well, it has to happen relatively quickly. That's why I brought it under 24-hour business because they're moving rapidly. Uh, what they, what they tried to do is to make these individuals accept, uh, they have a, a, a thing for them to sign and accept that they'll move out by the first and, and what they can do then at that point is keep the furniture that they're, and the, uh, electronics, the TV set, um, when they move. And that was the deal that they've kind of said, well, okay, that we'll let you keep that stuff that they're going to throw away anyway. Uh, you know, and like, oh, that's a big deal. Okay, and you keep that and you'll be out by December 1. And, uh, time is clicking away. As you know, December 1 is only days away now. And, um, uh, you know, I'm pretty sure that if we're holding permits, they'll have to come to the table and want to have some conversation.
What would be the legal basis for our holding up permits?
There isn't necessarily a legal basis. We're just holding them because they didn't, they didn't, they came in front of the selectmen. They made a suggestion that, uh, a rec, a thing that they were going to do this, that they were going to make sure that those people had a place to go when they came and made their presentation in front of us. And now they're saying they're not going to do that. And that to me is they lied to this board and I think the board should do anything they can. And I don't care if they sue us or they don't. Let them sue us. Go ahead, sue us. So what are they going to do? Take us to court. All right, we'll make our case in front of the court. They'll make their case and we'll see what happens. After all, we have in-house counsel, don't we?
Well, of course, it's always shocking to hear that a developer lied to us.
Yeah, exactly.
I just wonder if a more effective route might be for the tenants who obviously have some personal rights vis-à-vis their landlord to be going to housing court asking for some sort of relief uh, from whatever the property owner is attempting to do to them.
Well, first off, they're people without means and that's the first thing. And secondly, not only that they not have means, but they're in a little more precarious situation because it's a hotel, not, uh, not a residence. So it, it falls under different rules as well. So the only protection that we can, we can afford them is to try and do something, uh, in this vein, in my opinion. It, it doesn't hurt anything, you know, the most can happen was we'll end up in a, in a hearing somewhere and we'll have to tell them, you know, what, what we did and for what reason. Uh, that's the only real damage that can, can occur in my opinion.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if you, if you may, I was, um, we received a call from, uh, Representative from Turning Point today. Um, I was speaking to the, uh, the person and she said, well, this is, I attended those meetings, so I know, uh, this, you know, they said that. So this is one of the conditions. I said, it is not one of the conditions. And she said, oh, if it's not one of the conditions, there's really nothing you can do. Um, but they are working what they've been referred to Turning Point's, uh, legal counsel or legal help. Um, you know, I know, I understand what Mr. Tropiano is saying. These are people that, you know, don't, that aren't of means and frankly are very concerned about where they're going to live on December 2nd. So it's, um, uh, it's pretty, pretty darn scary for them.
I think, I think if we have the, I'm sorry. I think if we, if we, if we hold their permits up and we have, uh, our, our chairman write them a letter to, to, to say to them, uh, what do they think? They came and tell them, you know, you came in front of us. This is what you told us, what you're going to do. This is what you're not going to do, whatever. At least we'll get some action out of them. At least they'll want to have a discussion.
I'm just thinking the DHCD, which gives them their, uh, basically supplements them with grants and such would, that, you know, would be more concerned about this than anybody.
Didn't we give them some money too?
No.
Didn't they get some from the Affordable Housing Trust? I mean, not from the Housing Trust, from the CPA?
No.
No. I don't believe they ever applied to Community Preservation.
No.
Jim? Jim had a question?
Well, has anybody, um, from the town reached out to them and spoken with them directly about what they're doing and asked if they'd, um, put, put the, uh, ta, you know, put taking action off for a period of time and, and work with us, uh, trying to find alternative housing for these people instead of clubbing them on top of the head first. Um, now, o, open up some dialogue and, and see what's going on. I, I don't know. I, I didn't speak with them. I've had nothing to do with this really. Just watch them from the sideline and, and then if not, you know, come up with a strategy to address it. Um, and it, you know, it's a bad time of year. It's getting cold. I have to agree with, uh, Selectman Tropiano, we should do something. Um, I don't know if they've applied to pull permits already or not. So if either yourself, uh, acting, um, through the board, uh, Mr. Titlebaum and our, uh, Mr. Sullivan could, could reach out with them and have some dialogue, I think would be helpful. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Alan, what say you?
Well, morally and ethically, this is something we should do, obviously, if we can. But at the same time, to sit there and throw something out there saying we don't care if we get sued or not, um, doesn't work well at the end of the day. Um, I would basically, you know, Jim's idea of reaching out first and saying, hey, this is what you're supposed to do. You're not doing this. You know, and see if you can come up with agreement. I'm looking at Rich's face and I can see that he's not real thrilled about this, uh, of what was suggested. You know, I just, I just don't think it's the right way to do it. I think there's a better way to get to approach this. You know, it's, it's nice to sit there and threaten someone, we're not going to do this if you do that. But at the same time, if you don't have any legal standing, uh, you're putting yourself in a position that's just not going to work. So you know, I tried, I tried the, uh, soft stick first before I took the hammer out to kill them.
Well, if they lied to this board, in my opinion.
I understand.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be given the opportunity to say something.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I have to say, this is the kind of discussion that is made for executive session.
Yes, I agree.
When this goes to court, this, the tape of this meeting is going to be one of the exhibits, uh, at the trial. Now, for you to put me in the position of having to pass judgment on whether this is going to succeed or fail on tape and my comments are going to be replayed for the court puts me in an impossible situation.
Correct.
Good point.
If this was something that you wanted to talk to me about, House Counsel, as Selectman Tropiano reminded me, get on the phone and call me as an individual or schedule an executive session so that I can candidly tell you what I think is going to happen and how you can deal with it rather than just turning me into somebody who's going to manufacture a trial exhibit for the opposition.
I agree.
Good point.
Well, I still think, you know, this, this deserves something to come out of this board tonight. Uh, you know, Selectman Menees suggested that, you know, I reach out perhaps with Derek or something like that to these people. Uh, I'm more than happy to draft a letter, uh, noting our, uh, dire concern about what we've heard and to, uh, ask them to explain to us why they're not carrying through on the promise they made to us.
I'd make a motion to go ahead and do that.
Second.
Second.
Are you, you're okay with that, Patrick?
Yeah, it's fine. Look, i, i, if something's going to happen, this is a travesty. This can't remain. You can't throw people out on what is, by the way, meteorological winter, the first day, which is December 1st. Not to mention Christmas is coming. There's a COVID issue going on. Just because they decided to not allow, just as they side, decided at the end of October to start allowing, um, uh, people to be thrown out of their places doesn't mean that it's the right thing to do or the moral thing to do.
Okay, so, uh, we have a motion from Alan. And it was seconded by you, Patrick?
Yeah. Uh, Jim, I think. Jim beat me to it.
Okay, uh, motion by Alan, seconded by Jim. Okay, uh, motion by Alan, seconded by Jim. Uh, is there anything else? Uh, roll call vote, Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
No.
Okay, uh, myself, yes. Uh, I will send a letter, uh, requesting that they respond to these concerns. And we'll go from there. Anybody else have any 48-hour business? Uh, Judy?
No.
I think I already asked Alan and, uh, Patrick and Jim, so we'll move on from there. Liaison and initiative reports, Alan.
The Town Administration report?
Oh, I was letting him off the hook.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't do that.
Well, guess you know who loves you.
Uh, yeah, I just, uh, I want to give you a quick update, uh, on two items. And, uh, it's sort of a, it's sort of a successful return for an action the board's taken, so, um, Wareham joined the Town of Rockland and four other communities for CARES funding that, uh, became available through a special allocation of CDBG funds. So Rockland is the lead community and has fully administrative responsibility for the grant. The grant provides funding in two areas. One is micro enterprise assistance, which, uh, they go on to explain what a micro enterprise is. Uh, just to let you know, $50,000 has been earmarked for grants to Wareham businesses, and there's additional $180,000 in a common pool. Initial outreach and marketing has been completed, and Rockland staff is currently reviewing six applications from Wareham businesses. Public social services portion of this, Rockland will also make sub-grants to Turning Point for $25,000 and Damian's Place for $21,500 to help the organizations respond to increased demands for services resulting from the pandemic. Damian's will use the funding for salary for its warehouse workers, rent and purchase of food. Turning Point will use grant funds for services both at-risk and homeless clients. So the agreements between the Town of Rockland and the agencies are in the midst of being drawn up, and funds will be available as soon as the agreements are signed. So I just want to compliment the board on bringing, you know, for over $46,000 during this time to, to, uh, to, to great organizations within our community, plus additional $50,000 available for, for businesses, possibly more. So the actions you've taken have been, have been very helpful. Um, you know, and that's, I think people also forget that we, we provide additional funding through the CDBG program to, to, uh, Turning Point and Damian's as well, so. Uh, second, we've been, uh, you know, we're like Mr. McDonald, uh, Emergency Management Director, who works in the Board of Health Department, has been working with MEMA on some of the homeless issue. Unfortunately, we had a setback. We'd identified the Salvation Army as a location for a regional, a regional temporary shelter for this winter, which would have, uh, served for housing, housing some of the homeless from, from our areas and, uh, also providing facilities such as showers and such. Unfortunately, the Salvation Army said, we don't rent, you can only buy. Uh, so that set it ba, set them back. So there's, we're looking to see and identify some, uh, other buildings within the community, including at least, uh, one town building to see, uh, see what's, uh, what's avail, what's available. So, uh, we're taking these concerns very, very well. We know that MEMA is working hard. We're trying not to get passed over on this. Unfortunately, the first choice is, uh, is not available with the Salvation Army building. So that was an update on some of the, uh, some of the issues. It was good to see your dog, Jim.
You know, if I can just piggyback on that, I just find it hard to believe that, um, Salvation Army would say, we don't rent lease, we just, we just sell, and, and what their mission is. Um, you know, and for this, during this period of time in the winter, um, I'm, I'm just kind of speechless on it, which is, um, I don't know what to say.
Yeah, it was, it was, um, my father, my father who went into World War II at the age of 17 always loved the Salvation Army, because he said when he, when he came back, it was all the, uh, you know, the ladies from the Sally Ann's that had the, had the milk and stuff for them when they, when they came home. So he always remembered the kindness. So it's a little, it's certainly a little disappointing.
I guess they really don't want to be landlords. Yeah, you keep a surprise on, at what they're looking at, you know, going forward.
Yeah, so, and, you know, just want to thank again, uh, COG Inc., who, who manages the CDBG funds and, you know, yourselves for taking the initiative to allow them to move forward and beca, work with a couple other communities to make sure we got this funding. That's why we joined other communities, because it was competitive. So for us to be able to get that and bring those mon, these monies back for much-needed services is really excellent.
Okay, great. Uh, anything else you have to report?
No, sir.
Okay, now I'll go to liaison reports. Alan?
Uh, just to piggyback on Derek, uh, the Buick Club of America, which I'm a member of, the Yankee Chapter, which is a New England chapter, I got an email four days ago asking me about Turning Point, and, you know, are they worthwhile to put, make a, you know, donation contribution to? I kind of smiled, sent back a note. You couldn't place it any better place than that. So the Buick Club of America is actually donating to Wareham, to the Turning Point, which I thought was quite nice. Commuter rail meeting was Thursday. The discussion, I sent everybody notes on the meeting. It's, everybody got them last week. The situation right now is, as far as the commuter rail going down, there seems to be a legitimate, uh, concern whether or not the commuter rail is feasible to go over the railroad bridge all the way to Hyannis, because you can't control traffic on the canal during the day, on the weekdays. Tom Caher, which is the, uh, Executive Director of the Cape Cod Regional Transportation Authority in Hyannis, actually spoke about really not going any farther than Buzz's Bay. Uh, obviously Marie Oliva from the Canal Chamber Commerce made the same comments. I didn't want to go ahead and do that on my own, because I thought they would think that I was just trying to push Wareham and that's it. Uh, so it came out that there's probably gonna be a strong push to do the commuter rail, but realistically, put something in place that's viable. So I would say most likely this goes through, it will stop in either Wareham and Buzz's Bay or some, some other spot in that, in this, that region between the two towns. And as I mentioned before, I did mention the Deacon School property as far as the big fields as a possibility if they were looking for a five to six hundred car parking area, since that rail is right there as well, and there's direct access to 195, 495 and 25 that, the, uh, let's see what else I got. Really, nothing much else came up. Uh, the meeting next week on the first, I think it is, with the Lieutenant Governor and the Governor, to see what happens after Thanksgiving, uh, to see where we're at as far as numbers and everything else. I did stop by, just not part of the public safety group, but I did stop by this morning with Mrs. Smith and cut three police officers, Paul Girard, I think, uh, David Evans. Uh, they're looking at property across the street again from the Y that was done before, and also property again across from Rosebrook, and I'm hoping that they come up with a location and we can move along with this, because we do need a public safety complex. I'm not sure how it's gonna work, but I think they had some, I think they had a pretty good results on those two properties, but I don't want to speak for the committee. I just gave them some background information from four and five years ago, and that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Patrick?
All right, so first off, um, I would, I want to talk about this idea of using the Deacon School as a train station, I think is absurd. For one, it's a valuable piece of property that the town could, uh, put into service, and of course, the state gets a hold of it, will get nothing out of it, and that'll be, uh, just not a good spot for it at all. It's just a terrible place to put the train. Um, and secondly, as far as the, uh, the, the building committee goes, um, you know, they're still asking for us to give them permission to use the spot on Minnetab. And that's been going around and around, you know, well, were they gonna let us use it? Are they not gonna let us use it? Are they gonna let us use it? Are they not gonna let us use it? This is getting silly now. That property was identified the last time as a good property. It's a really good property for where it is, and, uh, we keep talking about this all the time, but no, we keep going around. We did this the last time. We went to 4,000 million pieces of property, as, as Claire could probably tell you. She's sitting right here. Uh, she's been around and around this. I don't know how many times she must have viewed some of these properties over the years, but she's been to them a lot. And, um, you know, I don't see why they can't be using that property. I mean, if they use, uh, what is it, 26 acres or something of that nature, if they use a portion of it, if the sewer department wanted to use it, they're gonna use about five acres of it, and it's all underground. It wouldn't affect the property a bit. And how much is it really gonna take to make a campus up there? Five acres, six acres? You know what I mean? Like, how much are you gonna use? Um, I, I don't know. I mean, it doesn't, it seems very, uh, very minute, and it seems like a valuable property. And if, for some reason, they think this board's holding it up, then we better make sure that we let them know that that's okay, uh, that they can use that property, because, uh, I, I don't see any reason why we would hold up any property, to be honest.
Yeah, I, I know that, I know that that question has been out there lingering, Patrick. I was thinking of actually putting it on the agenda for the eighth.
That's fine. That's a good idea.
So that, you know, we, we can weigh in and, and, and that way the committee can go forward, you know, knowing what we, we think about things. I think that will, that will be a, a good help to them, as you say.
Yeah, because if for some reason or another we don't want to give it to them, then we should tell them, because that will even make them change their mind about the direction maybe they're going again. You know what I mean? Uh, you know, let's not, uh, you know, let's just, let's do what we gotta do, you know? So I, I appreciate you putting it on. That's good.
Okay, thanks. Uh, let's see, Jim, liaising?
Um, I'd say we've covered most of it, I think, in, uh, talking about the, the refuse issue. And, um, Planning Board was quiet this week. It was almost a, it was, they were done in 35 minutes or so, and, um,
Wow.
Yeah, yeah, and, you know.
That's amazing. You must have been shocked.
Well, you know, everybody, it was just a little, it was light, it was, it was a light agenda. And, um, you know, I don't, I guess everything else is pretty quiet as far as liaisons and, and whatnot. And, and the committees that I'm, uh, responsible to, so moving right along. Thank you.
Okay, uh, let's see, Judy?
Um, yeah, I just want to piggyback on what Jim was saying. The, um, Planning Board is having a hearing on Monday on the, um, proposed hospitality rezoning. Um, that is a Zoom meeting, I believe at seven o'clock. It's been advertised two weeks in a row. Um, and so people who are interested in seeing or hearing about what that, uh, is, what the Planning Board is putting forth should tune in to that.
Can I say one thing about that, if you don't mind? You mind, Judy?
Go ahead, go ahead.
It's not, yeah.
So I was on Facebook one day, and there were people out there talking about, you know, this, this thing about, uh, you know, this rezoning and, oh, yeah, this is happening and that's gonna go on and it's gonna go on. And it was one woman who, uh, I really appreciated, because she came on, and she was sort of listening to what was going on, and she posted up, and she said, well, you know, I think I'd like to hear more about it. I'd like to know the information before I make a decision, so that I can make an informed decision, basically. And I wrote right back to her and I said, well, thank you. Uh, you know, I, I'm really hoping that the, the fact that everybody, uh, will take the time to learn and understand the project that it's, we're talking about, the projects and stuff that we're talking about out there, before they make, uh, an arbitrary decision. Because, um, you know, one thing that's for sure, without a question, that if we make a decision based on information that's false, we're gonna make a bad decision. And that goes for everybody out there who's looking at these things too. So when you're talking to the guy in the coffee shop and the guy down the street or a guy on Facebook, I love these people get all their news on Facebook now. I can't believe that I, when I post something up, I'm actually a news media now. I'm, I'm gonna, I'm, I wonder if I get the same rights the news media does. Although, I don't know, I wouldn't be listening to some of the people that post up as news, I'll tell you that. It's pretty crazy.
I just want to cor, correct what I said. The, the Planning Board hearing is at six on Monday.
Okay, great, thank you. I'm glad you corrected that. That's good, thanks. But that's it, that's all I have to say. Thank you, Judy, for your time.
I piggyback off what Judy said too. Six o'clock, they might have a short meeting before that related to, um, Borrego. But if you go to the town website under calendars and board meetings, you can find the, uh, Zoom, um, meeting number and, and, uh, enter through that, or you can find the information for, to utilize your phones, uh, if you're not using your internet. So go to the town meeting website, calendars, go to Planning Board Meeting, click on the agenda, and the, the Zoom meeting, um, number will be there. Thank you.
Uh, yeah, I don't, I don't have anything really to report. Next week, uh, the, uh, developer, uh, for Littleton Drive, uh, is gonna be coming before the board, uh, seeking, uh, a letter of endorsement to go to Department of Housing and Community Development as part of their project eligibility, uh, process. Uh, so they're gonna be asking, asking for the, the board's support for that. Uh, also, with regard to the, uh, the Redevelopment Authority, uh, there's been, uh, some interest by another man, marijuana manufacturer, uh, in using the steel building, uh, pretty much the same kind of thing that was, uh, proposed by Organa Brands. Uh, so that's, that, that's something that's, that may be coming forward for the board, uh, in terms of a host community agreement and also to potentially approve a lease. You know, remember, the board turned over, uh, sort of day-to-day, uh, operational control of Tremontale to the Redevelopment Authority, but for big-ticket items like a lease and so on and so forth, this is, this is the body that has to approve those, uh, and certainly the host community agreement. So those are gonna be coming up from the Redevelopment Authority as well. So I just wanted to, uh, you know, get that out there. Uh, let's see. Consent agenda. Uh, we have a confirmatory vote for meeting minutes.
I move that the, um, minutes for November 5th, 2020 be confirmed as to the vote that was taken last week.
Here we have one second by Judy, second by Jim?
Um, yeah, and then I, I just want to discuss it quickly.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, would it be confirmatory, or would we, uh, rescind the vote and take a new vote if we're changing the, uh, the people who are voting are gonna change their vote on it?
No, we'll let Rich weigh in on that. Did we lose him?
No, he's there.
No, I'm here.
Okay, we didn't put you to sleep. That's good.
Oh, no. You bear watching. Uh, I, I honestly, I don't think it matters. Uh, you can move to amend it, whichever way, it's okay.
Yeah, 'cause I, I will vote in, in, in favor of it, so I'm, I'm changing my vote from, from present to, you know, 'cause I had a chance to review the minute, so that's, I didn't know which would be proper procedure.
No, Jim, I think, oh, pardon me, uh, Selectman Minis, I, I think, I, I think, uh, really, either way would be perfectly acceptable.
I'm good then.
Okay, so we have a motion by Judy, seconded by Jim. Alan's weighing in.
Um, I went through the minutes again. Uh, there's an error. It is in the printout already. It talks about Chapter 90 funds. It says, uh, that basically the state is gonna go ahead with $300 million, but it actually says 3 million. And then a little bit farther down, it says, you know, talking about a, a shared thing with a, hopefully of a 400 million. So that 3 million needs to be changed, that 3 million needs to be changed to 300 million on that line.
Okay.
I will amend my motion to be confirm the minutes of November 5th, 2020 with the corrections noted by Mr. Slavon.
Thank you.
Okay, so the motion is to do that and fix the scrivviness error, uh, so we're good with that?
And Jim has to second.
He did.
Second.
He acknowledged, yep. Okay, uh, roll call vote, Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yep.
Myself, yes, 500. Okay, looks like we have to pay Rich, since we worked him so hard tonight.
Move to authorize payment to the Law Office of Richard P. Bowen.
Second?
Second.
By Alan. Okay, motion by Judy. By Alan? Okay, motion by Judy. No discussion, roll call vote, Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Yes, 500. And?
Alan?
Valentine.
Mr. Chairman, before we do that, and I know the hour's gotten late and it's, uh,
No, go ahead.
It's been a, you know, it's been a long meeting. I do just, we're heading into Thanksgiving holiday. That, that's unusual. But I, I would ask that we all take a little time because since about mid-March, it's been a non-stop run for, for, uh, all of us and all the town employees. And I just wanna say how thankful I am for all their support and hard work they've been doing for the community through an incredibly stressful time. Uh, and our first responders out there. And yes, Mr. Evans, I include the EMS when I say first responders. I'm always told I forget them. Uh, but seriously, it's been, we're, we're, we're very lucky and I'm thankful to have the staff and employees that we have supporting this town. So thank you.
Yes, thank you. And, you know, I'd also like to thank the board. Uh, I think, uh, since August, uh, I don't know that we've had a week off. Uh, I know, huh?
Yeah, we have.
Yeah, we had one.
But that's about it. Um, you know, we, we've met this week, which is Thanksgiving week, which we usually try to avoid. Uh, we've got some work to do to plow through, uh, before Christmas. I certainly don't think we need to meet on the 29th. And depending on how we, how, you know, how much is before us, it would be nice if we could take the 22nd as well. But I, I can't promise anything in that regard, but, you know, you've all worked very hard. I'd love to give you the two weeks off if I could. It would be a nice respite. You know, step back for a little bit, try to enjoy what we can in the holiday season and then come back a little bit recharged. So I'm gonna try. Uh, so with that in motion, uh, Alan, what do you wanna say?
I just wanna wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Again, please be safe. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, motion adjourned by Alan, seconded by Judy. Uh, roll call vote, Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Good night. Thank you, everybody. Happy Thanksgiving.
Good night. Oh, happy Thanksgiving.